It's not like to have a
Guten Morgen.
Yes, yes. So really what we're not going to call is next year 2024.
Unless Parker decides to hand it over, hypothetically speaking, there could be an opportunity for that to present itself and then we can all move forward.
They might want to do it and just get rid of us.
I'm okay with that.
I know we've talked about this and I probably shouldn't even ask this. What is the reason again Parker won't meet for this?
The reason that Bob gave me is that he doesn't want to well, let me back up a little bit. The questions that were sent to him from the public and from the board seem to him to be specific enough about properties that were under appeal. You know, people who submitted an abatement. He doesn't want to run the risk of interacting with the board or with the public about specific properties until it gets to the level of Board Assessment Review, where he would be at the meeting to defend his values and his methodology.
But then what about the questions that were given to him by the board that were of generic nature that were also denied?
I I'm not comfortable speaking for Bob. I'm just repeating
Right.
what he told me.
And this wouldn't be a workshop that it might be beneficial for him to be part of?
I don't think that he will be there. I can certainly ask him.
Well, I'm just wondering if you have the attorney to speak on the legality and him to speak on just concept.
I like your idea. I understand what you're thinking is going and I like the idea. I'm not sure that Bob would do it.
Would he just reach out?
I will reach out.
And if he says no because it's too short notice, would he do it the following week or? I mean, nothing bad should nothing mean.
Right.
I would strongly advise against it. Bob has had six months. It's a matter of, I mean, it's a matter of contract administration or not for the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors. It's time to step.
I agree with that. I think our determination determined whether we've had a contract.
Pretty sure.
We can read a contract.
So that's all this meeting's for then?
Whether you open it down.
No, this is to understand, well, no, especially if this the state statute gives determination as well, which is part of it, which then turns into
So we have two goals for this night and this is really the goal. I'm just trying to give us two goals because it feels like we just go round and round in circles and we never get anything resolved.
If we get a determination from the attorney.
But is that what the goal is?
It's part of the goal.
What's the other goal?
Is to the understanding the state statutes on, because the statute is very specific on what information we're supposed to have, what information is supposed to be housed at the town hall for future valuations, which we don't have. We can't address anything next year, just like we can't address it this year. And so that's, you know, and I would love for someone from Main Revenue Services to be there to say, how can you recommend the town getting this data that we need if we feel we don't have it? Do we have it? And then if we don't, how do we get it? And how does a town move forward? If we can't, we may not be able to address it this year for abatements. Everyone can evade again next year. Anyone who's who's in the, I'm drawing a term.
Stabilization.
That's the word in the steel sheet program. You know, it's they can, they're going to be here next year.
But those sounds like goals. We go all into these meetings with no goals. Now this sounds like goals.
My my goal is to determine, because if it's determined in that meeting and my gut's telling me it's going to happen, but I don't know, I'm just a vet individual, that there's been a breach of contract, then what's the remedy to that? And if our attorney says, you need this to do that, then we, you have now, I'll call it a legal opinion to go back to Parker and say, just so you know, this is what came out last night. And then, and then also from the state and the statute determination, what do we have? What do we need and how can we move forward, not just this year, but path forward?
And I think if we focus on these goals rather than talking about everything under the sun, we can get somewhere, but it feels like we talk about everything under the sun. We leave the meetings, we have no more answers than when we came in and that's my concern.
You need the data.
Yes.
The taxpayers own it, pay for it from our tax dollars and assessors do not hide it under the table until Board of Assessment Review time.
Meeting, we need to know how we're going to get it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Who's responsible to provide it and how do we get it?
That's exactly right. And what do you, how do we proceed? How do we get this information so we can proceed?
Who's responsible to provide it and how do we get it?
And, you know, we got, well, what you're saying is the timeframe. If we don't make the deadline we need, then if they, then they can always apply for the abatement next year.
But we have
I'm just, I don't understand.
You could apply for an abatement every year. You're entitled to do that as a taxpayer. We need to make it, I think we need to ask Parker appraisal. We've got, I don't know, 28? I didn't count the new ones that came in anyway. But whatever, ask them to start processing their position so that we at least have paperwork to look at.
This is what I need to know. The reason why they've stopped reviewing the abatement request is because they don't understand what their standing is with the town of West Bath because this board has said at different times that they don't want to work with Parker appraisal.
They're obligated to finish the abatements.
That's one thing. And then the other thing is then when they take time away from their other 26 clients across the state to come and review the abatements and they make a recommendation to this board, the board dismisses it.
That's our prerogative.
So that's your prerogative, but they're wondering why it makes sense to take time at this point in time when they don't understand what their status is with the town.
They were paid to do it. They were paid to do it.
They don't understand our status with them.
Right.
It shouldn't be a problem. They have a status paper of contract. They have to fill it. They were told they weren't filled it. So give us the information, do these reviews.
But at least present their recommendations on these abatements because we don't have anything in front of us other than what was filed on behalf of the resident. And that's nothing for us to go upon because we don't have the data to even tabulate it.
And if we can't tabulate it, then it should go to the next step.
But they don't have the, that's the problem is they don't have the information either.
And to keep it in perspective, I've spoke to Walton Brings, is the chair of the Agrosic Board, one of the 26 clients. As the client, they pay for six hours of work per year. It's one of those 26 clients. So to please keep it in perspective, though we've never been given a list of these other clients. Main Revenue, every year he's on the revote list. He had to file last April 1st with Main Revenue. I will reach out to Steve directly as an assessor. I want what he filed last year. That is his background, should have his client list. But when we hear 26 clients.
Thirty.
From Walton's mouth to my ears, it's six hours a year. So whatever the 26 clients are, the implication is not that they are weekly in 26 times.
Or doing $150,000 revote.
I just want to say thank you. I, that's much clearer why we're having this meeting next week. It was pretty murky.
I think we're going to learn a lot. And I, and hopefully, hopefully, we have a definitive next step. We owe it to the residents.
The one, the one question had been answered in July. Where is your sales assessment? Would it have depended multiple months on this? It's not a hard answer. It's a photocall and it's a send it over.
It should have been available before the hearings.
And then he has no objection in terms of, hey, this is too specific. That is supposed to be the foundation of the parameters he used to do the assessment. There's nothing more generic and basic than that question. You can ignore all the other questions until you get an answer to that one and the answer hesitates at that.
And that's supposed to be housed here also, permanently, path forward for future valuation questions, which we do not have.
Okay, shall we move on to these items of six, discuss update of the abatement review? So we have them. Doesn't require any action as far as I can see.
So 22, there are 22 active abatements. I presume that Justin Hennessey was sent over to the, for the board review instead of us? Since he said he doesn't, he's not going to give us an extension.
He has not filed as far as I know for a board assessment review. But that's what he did indicate.
I think he wanted his property card changed to reflect.
I'm, well, that's an answer I need from the board and I was going to bring that up during this agenda item. I don't know at this point in time if the staff has authority to make changes to property cards.
Why don't we wait for the attorney to give us that answer next week?
Yeah, I was kind of waiting until that time. I think that makes sense because right now the staff isn't sure what we can and cannot do. So I did not make any adjustments to property card.
And that's certainly something that we can pose to the Revenue Service. What can we change in the system? That, I mean, they've already paid, everyone's paid their taxes this year. So if they're changing a classification of, because we've got siding of the house, that's really on next year's bill, not this year's bill. They want a correct bill
Right.
versus an abatement. If that's, if I remember his email correctly.
Yes.
So.
It says procedurally for the town of West Bath. We're not sure if we can make adjustments right now.
If you don't make it and my sister and I hire a Realtor to sell the property, I anticipate that the abatement granted, and I was told tomorrow, I will have the abatement that I submitted signed by the two individuals who granted that abatement. I will have that copied. For my files, Ruth will get it to hers. I will see the signed certificate of release with a dollar amount that will be going to the treasurer. You assure me that I will have those. I anticipate any other abatement that was done, that people have already received that very basic necessary paperwork. But if you don't alter the tax record, if we need to deal with Realtor, if we need to deal with the IRS, if we need to deal with the Revenue Service, you have not corrected the information, failing to reflect our record standing. And then the taxpayer is impacted.
The following year.
No, 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 immediately upon abatement. If it's a, because it's an error, that record needs to be corrected. You are the elected assessors and we have the right to come to the town hall and obtain the accurate information for our own purposes dealing with the land.
Business item number seven. A correction of the official minutes for the 2022 budget annual meeting. The Department of Education discovered a discrepancy in the amount that was approved in Article 51 of the town meeting budget, the budget town meeting warrant. The amount to be approved, to be expended was $3,981,500, um, $358.32. And the attested minutes show the approved amount as $2 million, et cetera, which is a typographical error. The Department of Education requested corrective minutes and vote declaration. I move that we approve but change, and you will see it as outlined in the pages immediately following. One second, that motion. Is there any further discussion?
Pay that all the math. It's a million dollars amongst friends.
I believe the school did receive the full amount. We would have heard about that.
All in favor of the change? Carly, is that specific enough?
Yes, that's perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Business item eight, election clerk and ballot clerk appointments.
I do say that I have reached out to all of the clerks who are very eager to serve in this presidential election. In case you're wondering the difference between election clerks and ballot clerks, election clerks serve in state elections and ballot clerks serve in local elections.
So.
I'm sure everyone was curious. But we use the same people and we pay them the same amount as many of them are commingled.
Acquire, acquiring minds.
You can just have one motion. I will do two separate motions, one for each.
So for election clerks, let me read the numbers so that people will see. They're, they're divided into Republicans and Democrats and there is, there are positions for unenrolled persons. So Wayne Elliott, Joyce Hennessy, Madeline Hennessy, Sarah Hennessy, Glenda Lamar, Cynthia Morris, Rob Morris, Margaret Totten and Richard Totten are Democrats. Unenrolled, James Atherton, Kathleen Perry, Catherine Powers and Jane Weir. And for Republicans, we have Diane Delano, Kathleen Duzek, Peter LeMaire and Catherine McLean.
Can we just ask and go ahead and, I'm sorry, I'll ask that.
I move that we accept the, so this is appointment of election clerks, which is ballot clerks. As I said, did.
Second.
Can you recuse yourself because you are on the list?
Oh, I recuse just for
Kathy.
I'll second it with them, Kathy.
Some discussion.
Okay.
I just want to know how people get on this list and is there a chance for people to volunteer such as our other positions in the town?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked. So the first off is at the party caucuses, people can volunteer to be on the list. And then secondly, people do come in all the time asking to be on the list. And based on their participation levels in previous years, I keep them on or I drop them off if I've asked them for several elections to no response. So there are people that have dropped off. If someone were to walk in tomorrow and say, hey, I really want to serve and I'm a Republican and you only have four and I really need more Republicans, they can be appointed. They would just have to be appointed for each election they serve at. So there's no cutoff timeline for this specifically? Yeah, the cutoff is on there. I think it's May 1st for the two-year appointment. After that, they can be appointed on an election basis, per election. And any timeline up to the election? I mean, so just let it be speaking. Yeah. So someone, okay. We should add that to our elite strategies for volunteering now.
Carly, what happens if someone is unaffiliated and they want to change to the clairvoyant? Does that affect their appointment?
It does not. Nope, they can change it anytime.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. So there's a motion and a second. All of it yet? Okay.
People go back.
Well, no, because now you know. We accept the ballot presented for ballot clerks.
Could you read them so that people know who they are?
Wayne Elliott, Joyce Hennessy, Madeline Hennessy, Sarah Hennessy, Glenda Lamar, Cynthia Morris, Robert Morris, Margaret Totten, Richard Totten are as Democrats. James Atherton, uh, Ca-, I'm sorry?
Shorty.
Atherton.
Atherton, Kathleen Perry, Catherine Powers and Jane Weir are unenrolled. Republicans, Diane Delano, Kathleen Duzek, Peter LeMaire and Catherine McLean for Republicans. I move that we accept that as presented.
Second. All in favor? I would encourage anybody to sign up. Working the elections is a great privilege and it's pretty much a lot of fun.
It's a great way to get to know your neighbors.
Absolutely. And I think hanging around the polls on election day is a great way to understand that our elections have integrity.
And I think this year it would be a great year and probably a good year to get more Republicans to participate.
And Carly, you need to make sure you have my voted signs.
Stickers. Yes. I have mine on. I want to get two years ago. Then for the kids that say future voter.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
We have a lot of kids and they want stickers.
We want to make
Our future voters.
Okay, town administrators report.
I don't have anything in my report, however, we do have a utility easement that we received from CMP today that needs to be approved by the SLA board. It's for a poll location permit. So.
Where is this poll?
It's on Foster's Point Road. And there's a depiction of the site on the final page of the document. Or maybe not the final page, the one before.
Just poll 57. Well, is it the new poll? They're replacing it. They're replacing poll number 58. In case anybody knows our polls by number.
Well, there was an accident a couple of weeks ago. I think it might be that poll.
Oh, the one close to town hall, I think?
Yeah.
Power outage, I just have poll number calling.
Is it on Foster Point Road?
Yes, I do. I see the dial line, I give the poll number. It helps?
It just, that's all it says.
Okay.
So there's a signature.
We really want to give them permission, I would presume. So I move that we authorize the Central Maine Power Company to move that poll.
And are we going to talk about the campaign?
If you want to.
A second for motion?
Yes.
Because we passed over them in the end.
They're correspondent.
We have correspondents. So let's deal with this first.
Are we going to finish the vote?
Yes, okay, so moved in second to permit the movement, the movement? The moving of the poll number 57. Going to move 135 feet. So all in favor or is there any further discussion? All in favor.
And you guys are all in, but really think this is bizarre. My poll is 681.
How do I know that? Oh, that's too funny. Two of you know your polls.
I do.
Oh, you're hoping to share it. I can ask my neighbor with Crow. He might tell me.
I do. I know the one is the vinyl hall, which is usually where the fuse goes out, so I call that one in when the fuse is out and I have them at that.
I just know, hold the tone when I need service.
I feel, I feel very ignorant because I don't know. Where do we sign?
Right there, you're looking at it.
Municipal officers.
I believe it helps get service faster.
Yep. Anything can help.
Anything that you can help.
Actually, I didn't even have to be home when I had it repaired last time because I needed
Because you've been on your pole.
Oh, that's rich.
Kathy, did you sign this already?
No.
It would be nice to have the utility company and you don't need to know the poll.
In your dreams.
In my dreams. It'd be nice if they knew that the east end of Hill Road was not connected to the west end of Hill Road.
Okay. Correspondents. So we have a letter from the Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry, who are the nice people who are in charge of the comprehensive plan review. And I presume this has been shared with the comprehensive, hang on, folks?
Yes.
So they have some corrections and some additions. Interesting, fascinating information and the comprehensive plan folks are meeting next Monday night?
Yes.
To begin review and corrections. All totaled, it looks like the job was done rather thoroughly and completely. And there's not a whole lot of stuff that really needs to be corrected.
I'm not sure you both knew what red fin pickerel was.
One of them cooked.
I wonder if they're boning us regular pickerel. And, but they didn't say where, where we find these red fin pickerel. Are they in the Lewitland?
I don't know, maybe Winnie is. We'll find out Monday night.
Okay. And we have the blue spotted salamander in West Bath, which is an endangered species.
Oh, great.
So.
That was a yellow spotted and a blue?
Well, the state wants us to put animal list, that's all.
To go with cousin, the yellow spotted.
And I've never seen them. I haven't put them through enough rocks apparently. Have you seen them?
I've seen the blue.
Well, the next
I've seen a blue.
Really?
Yeah.
I've only seen yellow.
Yeah.
I don't know my poll number.
They're going to paint them with numbers.
Eight sixty-one.
Is that under your poll?
But I don't, I'm not allowed to tell you where I saw it. It's an endangered species.
Aren't I the oldest friend?
I just thought that was fascinating reading.
Yes, it is, it is. People, really, the, the this got reviewed by the Department of Agriculture. We got the, the main department of the main resources review. We got the water protection coordinator for the main CDT drinking, CDC, drinking water program. We got the municipal planning assistant to take a look at us. Very exciting. Main Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife did a standard, we have stream crossing guidelines. And it occurred to me that I don't think Maine, the MDA, took into consideration the stream crossing when they put in the culvert on the Berry's Mill Road.
I mean, anybody that puts a culvert in anywhere has to follow some guidelines.
The DOT.
But it was emergency. Anyway, that, that is the correspondence, really. I, I have, I will admit to being a nerd, but I found this very exciting. Slipware, comments and announcements.
I will not be at the March, I just want to give you ample notice. March 8th, March 7th. I'll be traveling to work.
Um, have you, for example? Uh, comment, uh, oh, Steve?
What developments have there been in considerations of an assessing agent to the town of Westbach?
There has been no further discussion since last week.
You were seeking some further information last week. Has any of that developed? Or has anyone tried to obtain that information?
I have not. What was the information?
Christine was supposed to, uh, inquire a bit around as to who might be available. Which might be a difficulty.
I didn't get that from the meeting.
Okay. Were you gonna put add in the paper advertising position, or?
No.
No, you're not.
No, we're not, yeah, we're not nearly.
No, I thought we were going to wait until the meeting with the attorney first.
Yes.
And then make decisions.
Yeah. But that was my understanding as well. Yes, Steve?
There is an error in the town tax match without an assessing agent. How do we get that corrected?
There's that, uh, something else we can cover.
We must ask that in the meeting. Thank you. Storm damage.
Hmm, you heard anything?
Yeah, there was a fair amount. But I don't, I don't have specifics. Um, you all have received information, some?
We have lots of information about how to report. Um, however, we didn't receive many calls at town office about damage.
Actually, we shopped the fire chief as well. He said that we're in pretty good shape compared to
Yeah.
other communities, so we didn't fortunately take the hit that certainly Bath and other surrounding areas did.
We fired enough up the Numbell's River, so we probably were scared.
Wrong.
Well, I think, you know, on the incoming tides, we've got some properties that do face that. How, I don't know how yours did, David. How was it?
Pretty much okay.
High tide.
We had a significantly, we almost lost our dinghy. Um, it wasn't tied off. That was Scott's fault. When, amendments? I've already told them.
We're, we're going to lose a bit of the hayfield to wetland, I think.
Oh, baby, I heard the salamander's gonna move in there.
You spotted it?
The 681.
Did it, salamander, like something?
I heard that's riding that place.
Oh, okay, that's what changes their color. I mean, who color?
That's when the yellow change the blue.
No, it'll be pink.
Green, pink, yeah.
The water's cold.
Yes, but it is fun sort of to see ducks swimming in the hay field.
We had, I, I would say that we had a five-foot change from high tide to where we were seeing it. Where we, I mean, of, of our land. I mean, it came significantly farther than we've ever seen it.
The power outages were a lot less this time, too.
Thank heavens.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, absolutely.
Better not come a little bit there.
Is there any way to ask-
I would let that one for eight hours.
Ask the DOT people to, we feel that they need to keep monitoring the causeway in Berry's Mill because of possible undercutting it.
Could you, um, reach out to those folks?
And maybe Allison as well? They seem to listen to elected officials. And maybe ask them what their plans are for the re-repair at the end of Berry's Mill.
Hold on, that one?
All they would move 10 feet south of that. It's still there.
Any other comment?
I move that we adjourn.
Second? In favor?
Amen.